May I ask you something?
Thank you. Thank you very much. And today, not today?
In case lang na, kailangan pampira. Salitaan kita. Pero hindi, wala naman sa repander. In case lang, wala tayong ginagana.
So tayo. After that, sa tayo, sa niya, sa pag-ano.
Namaya sa'yo, pagkatapos. Kasi dapat after niya, pag tayo yun 'yung detente, yun 'yung teleconfent. Pero, um, case na hindi pa sila ready, wala tayong ginagawa.
Thank you.
Paparami tayo ng may doorating mapapayat eh. Pero, dinigado to eh, kasi pag sunod sa natin to, bawang-mangang. Oo. Hindi natin magpupulot. Ano ka lang muna, sir? Para ano? Bawang may mga asin. Kau?
Tapos na ako. May di din lang ko lang, ang ginger.
Bakit?
Naku. Ano lang, sir? Um, bab, mga bata. Ang nari lang sa kumipulot.
Oo na.
Huh?
Ang middle.
Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker?
Speaker.
Hi.
May just makispo mag-present.
Pero, magbu ka yun.
Okay.
Are they live?
Hi.
Okay.
Oh, it.
The session is now called to order. Uh, please stand for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan. Alang ng puso, sa tipit moy buhay. Lupang hiniram, guyak alang magitin. Sa manlulu pi, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa lakitong pagka. Tayilang ang tulat, awit sa paglayang nirawahan. Ang kissap ng wata, at moy kamupay naratingin. Ang pituwing na paraw niya kailan, magmay magdilin. Lupan ang araw ng war, amit magsikat. Uyay lamit sa tipon. Aming ligaya, napak may mahapin. At lahat ay nangtanan sayo.
Please remain standing for a minute of prayer and reflection. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may move, uh, that we defer the calling of the members. So move.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion to defer the calling of the role is hereby granted.
Madam Speaker, may move, uh, for the deferment of the approval of the journal of the previous session. So move, Your Honor.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion to defer the approval of the journal is hereby approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reverence of business. And request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as communications and committee reports. So move.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as the communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of business, bills on first reading, House Bill 4880, institutionalizing and mainstreaming payment for environmental services and policy and investment programs by Representative Pangani Ban.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 4881, granting exemption to state tax to the state of deceased members of the AAP and the PNP who died in service by Representative Gatsalyan.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 4882, prohibiting the malicious dissemination of false information or the willful making of any threat concerning bombs, explosives, or any similar device or means of destruction by Representative C. Alvarado.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill number 4883, providing for the development and protection of the Philippine handloom weaving industry by Representative C. Alvarado.
The Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill number 4884, establishing the Department for Culture and the Arts by Representative C. Alvarado.
The Committee on Government Reorganization and the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill number 4885, preserving the country's traditional folk arts as part of its tangible cultural heritage by Representative C. Alvarado.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4886, establishing a unified housing and urban development plan and a centralized home financing program by Representative Makapagalaroyo.
The Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill number 4887, establishing the Bulican State University San Rafael Campus in Bulcan by Representative Silberio.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill number 4888, introducing administrative tax reforms by Representative Salseda.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 4889, granting privileges to students at all levels in public and private schools by Representatives Batocabi, Garbin, and Co.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 4890, establishing a human trafficking prevention education program for the youth by Representatives Batocabi, Garbin, and Co.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 4891, regulating transportation network services by Representatives Batocabi, Garbin, and Co.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill number 4892, establishing the virtual one-stop shop for the purpose of streamlining the permitting process of power generation projects by Representatives Batocabi, Garbin, and Co.
The Committee on Energy.
House Bill 4893, establishing the Philippine Energy Research and Policy Development Institute by Representatives Batocabi, Garbin, and Co.
The Committee on Energy.
House Bill 4894, establishing a national farm-to-school program by Representative Garin Sharon.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4897, protecting local public markets by Representative Atienza.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 4898, amending Republic Act 9006 by Representative Paringas.
The Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill number 4899, creating the Department of Overseas Philippine Workers by Representative Castillo.
The Committee on Government Reorganization and the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 4900, interdicting and authorized disposition of human corpses by individuals, crematorium, or funeral parlors by Representative Castillo.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 4901, amending Republic Act number 7160 by Representative Relampagos.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 4902, providing for a full tuition subsidy for students enrolled in SUCs by Representative Tupas.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
Resolutions, House Resolution 733, commending and congratulating Miss Pia Lonsa Worsback for her outstanding reign as Miss Universe and being a source of continued pride for Filipinos by Representative Chanko.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 734, commending and congratulating Maria Mika Maxine Medina for being among the top finalists in the 2017 Miss Universe Pageant by Representative Chanko.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 735, urging the Committee on Ecology to inquire on the DNR and exotach agencies, particularly the Mines and Geosizes Bureau, to report on the structural integrity of the dams, tunnels, and other facilities constructed by the Barca Permining Corporation by Representative Bilasco.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 736, adopting and endorsing the National Archives of the Philippines possession and use of the Interdancia Building in Intramuros to house its Spanish records and to serve as NAP's headquarters by Representative Scudero et al.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Resolution 737, commending the DOT for spare heading and dual-plan coordinated and executed hosting of the 2016 Miss Universe Pageant by Representative Rocamora.
The Committee on Tourism.
House Resolution 738, congratulating and commending Maxine Medina for her performance during the 65th Miss University Beauty Pageant held at the Mall of Asia Arena in Pasay City last January 30, 2017 by Representative Batawil.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 739, commending the outstanding Young Men Awardists of 2016 by Representatives Chanko and Kimbo.
The Committee on Rules.
Subpinaduses tekum, pursuant to one, section 151 rule 23 of the rules of the House, transmitting as the subpinaduses tekum dated 28 November 2016 issued by Ray Patrick M. RC.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, Your Honor, this is with regard to House Bill number 4767, which we approved on second reading yesterday. We have a speech from the chairperson, the Honorable Linabel Villarica, and I move for its insertion into the records in support of House Bill 4767. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is granted. Madam Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Kakabagao of the Lone District of Tinagad Island. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
Maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker.
The honorable Congresswoman from the Lone District of Tinagad Island is recognized.
Magandang hapon po. Bago pa man ako, naging isang Kongresista noong 2010, ako ay isang alternative lawyer at isang community organizer ng mga magsasaka. Ako po ay isang abogadong nakisalamuha sa mga batayang sektor upang makita nila na sila ay may kapangyarihang gamitin ang batas upang maipagtanggol ang kanilang karapatan at kapakanan. Sa mga gawain ko noon, at bilang isang taga Mindanaw, nakadaupang palad ko ang tinatawag nating try people ng aming lupain, ang mga settlers, ang mga lumad, at ang mga moro. At dahil sa karanasan ko, kasama sila, napagtantukong mahirap is sa katuparan ang layuning magtanggol ng karapatan ng aking kapwa kung walang pagkilala sa kanila. Kinakailangan na kinikilala muna natin ang isa't isa upang makabuo ng pag-unawa. Kapag nabuo natin ang pag-unawang ito, mas umiigting ang pagkakataong magbuklod upang makakilos tungo sa ating mga kolektibong adhikain. Pagkahakinanlan ang isang mahalagang bahagi ng pag-unlad at paglaban para sa karapatan ng isa't isa. Ito rin ay mas napagtibay pa sa aking puso't isipan. No'ng ako ay nagpasilitite ng pagboboon ng mga executive at legislative agenda ng humigit-kumulang pitumpong bayan sa Mindanaw, kasama na ang mga munisipyo ng ARN.
Madam Speaker, I rise today on a matter of personal and collective privilege. Since 2013, every February 1 of every year is World Hijab Day. Observed in different countries to raise awareness primarily on the significance of the hijab or the veil used by our Muslim sisters. On that day, non-hijabs, Muslims and non-Muslims are invited to wear the hijab and be a hijabi for a day. Founded by Naz Makan, the World Hijab Day is a story of persecution turned into inspiration. The story of an 11-year-old girl from Bangladesh, uprooted from her home, finding herself a minority in a New York neighborhood. The only girl wearing a hijab at school. She turned her negative experience of discrimination and harassment into an opportunity to invite understanding, tolerance, and friendships. As principal author of a measure that seeks to protect all persons from all forms of discrimination, this representation finds no better occasion than this month of the World Hijab Day to rise and join not just our Muslim sisters, but all sectors and individuals of various genders, cultures, faiths, ages, social statuses, those who continue to be victims of discrimination in this day and age. Ang hijab ay hindi na lamang po simbolo ng Islam at ng ating mga kapatid na Muslim. Ang iba't ibang kwento ng mga hijab o mga babaeng nagsusuot nito ay kwento ng kahit na sinong biktima ng diskriminasyon dahil sa kanyang anyo, sa kanyang lahi at paniniwala, kultura, at pala-nampalataya. At katulad ng lahat ng uri ng diskriminasyon, ito ay nag-uugat sa kakulangan ng edukasyon. Maling impormasyon, simpleng takot, o kagaya ng mga nabanggit ko sa simula, ang kawalan ng oportunidad na kilalanin ang bawat isa. Mula po noong, ako ay isang community organizer, hanggang sa naging abogado, miyembro ng kamarang ito, patuloy po akong nakikisalamuha sa mga batayang sektor ng lipunan, kasama na ang ating mga kapatid na mga moro. Ako ay nagkaroon muli ng pagkakataong ito kamakailan lang ng ako ay pumunta sa basilan, hindi bilang Kongresista o Abogado o ano man, kundi isang ordinaryong kapatid na nais silang makilala. Nakiluto po ako sa kanilang mga kusina, nakapagkwentuhan sa ilalim ng puno ng manga habang umalingaw-ngaw ang adhan o ang kanilang call to prayer. Tinuruan din nila akong magdasal sa kanilang masjid o mosque. Na malengke din po ako sa kanilang public market at nakipagtalakayan sa mga nagbebenta ng isda at gulay. This experience taught me two things. One, that we have so much in common. Second, that whatever differences we have makes us even more beautiful to each other. And I think this is what we must learn from the World Hijab Day. To be in someone else's shoes, to live someone else's life, for it is only by experience that one can truly understand. The hijab may be a simple cloth, but it is a symbol of so many things. First, of being a woman. For many who do not understand, it is seen as a symbol of oppression, of women without rights, who allow themselves to be suppressed and be subjugated. Our Muslim sisters struggle to get out of this stereotype as they continuously prove that wearing the hijab never stop or never stops them from pursuing their dreams, from performing their chosen roles at home and in the society, from demanding for and exercising their rights. The hijab has also become a symbol of religious and cultural discrimination. As Islamophobia continues to rise in certain countries, the right to wear the hijab becomes the first casualty. Our Muslim sisters becoming the most vulnerable to discrimination, harassment, and even hate crimes. We have even heard of countries banning the wearing of hijab. And as advocates against discrimination, this becomes our own cause. At pangatlo po, bilang isang simbolo ng pala-nampalataya, ang ating kamalayan tungkol sa hijab ay kasing lalim o kasing babaw din po ng ating pangunawa sa relihiyong kinakatawan natin. At ng kinakatawan nito, na ang Islam. Hindi po ako eksperto sa usaping ito, ngunit bilang isang Pilipino na may kapwa Pilipinong sumusuno dito, tingin ko po tungkuli nating alamin ang Islam at kilalanin ang mga Pilipinong Muslim. Kasama na rin po ang mga katutubong Pilipino. Kasama po ito at mahalagang bahagi ito ng pagkilala natin sa ating sarili at sa ating bayan. Sana ay magbigay daan ang araw na ito, hindi lamang sa pagkakaisa, kundi sa pagkakapantay-pantay nating lahat. Equality knows no religion, or culture, or conviction. At kasabay ng paglaban para sa pagkakapantay-pantay, kasama na rin dito ang pag-iit sa pagkahakilanlan natin sa isa't isa. Paano natin ipaglalaban ang karapatan at kapakanan ng Pilipino kung di natin sila at siya kilala? At paano natin mas ganap na magagawa ito kung hindi natin makita na ang moro ay malaking bahagi ng Pilipino? Buksan po natin ang ating mga mata, tingnan po natin ang bawat isa. Kilalanin natin ang bawat isa. At ngayon, Madam Speaker, nais kong magabot na aking taos pusong pasasalamat sa isa nating kasama, sa napakaraming laban dito sa kongreso, si Congresswoman C.T. Jaliaturabinhataman na anak Mindanaw party list. Para sa pagbibigay sa akin ng inspirasyon at pagkakataong magpatuloy ng pagkatuto para sa adhikain ng pagkahakilanlan. Maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker, magsohol sa inyong tanan.
Thank you, Congresswoman Bagao, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker.
Yes?
Madam Speaker, may this representation be given a few seconds to make a manifestation?
Yes, go ahead, Congresswoman.
Thank you so much, thank you Majority Leaders. Um, I was mentioned by the Honorable Congresswoman, and um, as a Muslim woman wearing the hijab, I also find it necessary for me to give my proper acknowledgement and thanks, deepest gratitude to Congresswoman Kakabagao for bringing forth the advocacy of the World Hijab Day, and more than that, the advocacy against discrimination, um, which is really a universal issue na just for the Muslim women, na just for the hijabis. We thank her for standing up, um, in our behalf, and most especially for inviting all of us to learn more about each other, for the Filipinos, majority, for the majority Filipinos to learn more about your, um, sisters and brothers of different faith and of different cultures. So maraming, maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Congresswoman C.T. Hataman, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Bagao uh, to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the speech of the Honorable Bagao is referred to the Committee on Rules.
Madam Speaker, we also would like to recognize the guests of the Honorable Bagao, the constituents, teachers, and students from the Saint Scolastica community.
Would the guests of the Honorable Bagao please rise to be acknowledged? Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill 4727.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Congresswoman.
Before we engage in the very serious deliberations on the death penalty bill, because 4727 is the death penalty bill. Before we go into that, this representation would like to reiterate my request and my query made two weeks ago on this floor when I said, before we even tackle the all-important issue of reviving or restoring the death penalty, we would like to be informed as to the identity of the three members of this chamber whom the speaker has identified as drug cuddlers or drug lords in their districts. Hindi po sinagutsion, hanggang ngayon, naghihintay po kami ng sagot. Ay hindi po naman siguro tayo dapat usap ng kamatayan, death penalty by this chamber where three members are tainted by the speaker's accusation that they are involved with drug merchandising or drug-related activities. Hindi po tama na ang magdedebate tungkol po sa sentencia ng kabatayan ay tatlo sa atin, ay suspected drug cuddlers or drug lords. Hindi po, hindi po ba tama? For the sake of clarity, transparency, and fairness, so that all of us who will engage in this debate on the death penalty are cleared in our position, in our standing, and our representation, that we are not drug lords, we are not related in any way to the drug problem of the nation, and it can only be done with the speaker naming the three members of this chamber whom he has publicly announced as involved with the problem of drugs in the nation. Inuunit po namin 'yung aming kahilingan bago tayo umasok sa isang napakaselan, napaksa. napaksa ngayong hapon, ay sabihin po natin, sino po ba 'yung tatlong congressman? Sino po ba sa amin ang may kaugnayan sa problema ng droga, which is precisely the topic of this bill 4727? We would like to mete out the death penalty on anyone involved with a drug problem. Hindi po siguro tama na ang mga tatayo rito at pakikipagdibade ay merong pagkakasangkot sa droga. And we would feel, and we would definitely feel that we are not being sincere in our calling and our responsibilities unless we demand for the disclosure of the names of the three members of Congress whom the speaker has identified as related to the drug situation in their districts. Yung po ulitin ko, ulitin ko po as a matter of personal and collective privilege that we should be informed and the nation should be informed that members of Congress are indeed not part of the problem. And if they are part of the problem, and if the speaker can name the three, let them be accused publicly and let them defend themselves too. Meanwhile, the cloud of suspicion hovering in this chamber, because as long as this is kept private and secretive, lahat po tayo ay suspected drug-related members of Congress. Be fair to us, Mr. Speaker. Be fair to the chamber, be fair to the Congress of the Philippines. We are lawmakers and we are going to touch on a very important critical issue. Let those with clean hands participate. Otherwise, hindi po siguro tama kapag't kun tayo dumating sa butohan, baka 'yung boto ng tatlong yon ang mag-in-depensya eh hindi po naman maganda ibubunga niyan. Ang gumawa ng batas, kamatayan ay tatlong drug lord. So in fairness to the nation and to our people, we are again reiterating our demand that the names of the congressmen accused by the speaker no less and mentioned by President Duterte as involved in the drug problem in their districts. We will be awaiting for an answer, Madam Speaker.
Mr. Majority Leader.
Yes, may I answer that, Madam Speaker?
Please go ahead.
In fairness to the speaker, it wasn't the speaker who first mentioned about it. It was the president who was holding a list which he said included two names of members of the House of Representatives, and he gave it to the speaker. And the speaker passed the list on to me containing all the names nationwide, not only of members of Congress, but all elected officials, foreign nationals, civilians, as well as other government employees. But, Madam Speaker, this, I deem it proper and prudent that we should conduct first a inquiry where it should be out with strict confidence because it has happened. This is not a matter of a public accusation. These are intelligence reports. And first of all, there is no drug lord identified there. The three who were mentioned there were mentioned as alleged protectors. If the president himself, who is the chief executive and has all the resources to verify all of this information, did not reveal the names of these people, it would be unfair to reveal their names prior to a deeper investigation. So I have already called for the head of the PIDEA and the head of the Philippine National Police, and we will be meeting tomorrow. As of now, those three in the list, one has already been removed, and they accepted that it was by mistake and there was no basis. It is precisely for this reason that we should first conduct a discreet inquiry because it is unfair to name members of this body where there have not been even given the opportunity to rebut, and we have not even seen how this list came up. So tomorrow, I will meet with General La Penya and General De La Rosa and those who were mentioned, and we will go over that. And when there is solid proof, or at least a basis to go farther than that, then we will file it in the Committee on Ethics. But then, let me be clear, that the jurisdiction of the Committee on Ethics only applies to acts committed in the present Congress. So there are many matters that have to be taken out first here. First of all, there is no formal complaint. This is just an alleged investigation report which has to be verified further. So may I ask the indulgence of the gentleman that before the voting comes, we will thoroughly reveal the names if there is basis to reveal them.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Congressman.
We have our highest regard for the fairness and the accommodating attitude of the Majority Leader. We have our impression of his fairness and patriotic sense that he cherishes the integrity of this chamber, and that is the reason why we have been conducting our sessions in a very orderly manner. But on the other hand, I would like to get his assurance that the names of the mentioned congressman shall be revealed even while we are discussing or listening to speeches in favor of the death penalty. But we would surely and definitely ask him to reveal the names because even if it's two, even if it's one, the identity of that particular congressman or congressman must be revealed. Otherwise, when we go into voting and the difference of the voting would be one or two, the suspicion of the whole country will linger on that this Congress definitely is not performing their task of protecting the integrity of our chamber. I know that deep in the hearts of our members and colleagues, they share the misgivings of this representation. We have to cleanse the name of Congress as it has been included in the list of the drug protectors or drug cuddlers as the president mentioned and emphasized by the speaker. We reiterate our position that unless that is done and public disclosure is made, we will all be suspected drug cuddlers and drug protectors. The integrity of the institution is tantamount to the protection of the good name of this chamber. Our Congress is to be respected, our lawmaking functions have to be appreciated. But if it's tainted with the drug hands of those involved in the drug marketing in a country, then we will not be able to accomplish anything by passing laws which are supposedly addressing the problem itself. We reiterate our position and our request that the names of those members of Congress be made public and those who are involved indeed in their findings should be charged accordingly. They may even be removed from this chamber. But definitely, we cannot go through our work tainted with that particular black man of being involved in drug pushing in our country. With that, Madam Speaker, I am relying on the good board of the Majority Leader. He mentioned that before we go into voting, the names of the congressmen, if any, will be revealed. If there are no members of Congress indeed who are involved in the drug marketing in the country, then let it be known that there was a mistake in what the president received and what the speaker announced, that indeed, there is not two, only two, but three members of Congress who are involved in drugs. Asa hangpo, 'yung sinabi na ating Majority Leader believing in his integrity and his credibility that the names of congressmen who may be involved will be made public shortly. Makakaasap po kayo, makakaasap po kayo na 'yan ay ipapalabas ko pagka-dumating po doon sa tamang panahon. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Majority Leader, thank you Congressman Alciansa, Majority Leader.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker? Madam Speaker?
Yes, Honorable Daza, yes, you are recognized.
Would the distinguished Majority Leader here to just three questions? Only three questions regarding the subject matter that has just been discussed? Would the Majority Leader here to just three questions? And I will now, and I will now...
As long as it only requires three answers.
Three questions.
Okay.
The first question is that... Is it not, is it not a fact that under the rules, there is no clear-cut definition as to the jurisdiction of the Committee on Ethics regarding the conduct or when the misconduct occurred? But that it is the rules, the internal rules of the Committee on Ethics that says that the Committee on Ethics has no jurisdiction over any conduct that happened or that existed or that occurred before the present Congress. That's the first question. Now, the second question is this. If the reply to the first question is yes...
May I ask if we do it one by one because my memory is now...
Yes, that's now the Majority Leader.
So may I answer one by one? As to the first question, Madam Speaker, the rules appear in the, as the gentleman has brought out, in the Committee Rules. And under our rules, rules issued by the committee are presumed to be of the House if they are not in contradiction to any House rule. So under the Committee on Ethics, it states there that the jurisdiction of the committee is limited to acts committed in this Congress.
Is it within the, second question? Is it within the personal knowledge of the distinguished Majority Leader that the conduct imputed or allegedly imputed on the three members of the House that are in the narcoleist were allegedly committed, if ever committed, before they became members of the House?
Not, absolutely not, Madam Speaker. Precisely that's why we are meeting with those who prepared the list tomorrow to find out when were these alleged acts committed.
Now, my third question, my last question. If these alleged acts that resulted in these members being included in the narcoleist were committed before they became members of the present Congress, what is the sense, what is or significance or value of spending time or energy in regard to any investigation that would be conducted by the Majority Leader or the leadership regarding these three members?
Precisely, Madam Speaker, the reason why we are meeting with the people who had any participation in the preparation of the list to find out if these accusations or allegations have any basis at all. Only until then will we be able to determine such, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman Daza.
Madam Speaker, at this juncture, we move to consider, under unfinished business, Committee Report 47 and House Bill 4727. And for that purpose, could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure?
Madam Speaker?
Yes.
Before we tackle this particular measure, I move that we first hold the roll to make sure that we have the numbers in a quorum. Otherwise, discussions and debates, speeches for or against will not amount to anything unless we establish that we do have a quorum now. According to my count, Madam Speaker, we only have about 102. Unless that is rebutted by the secretary, I am saying we only have 102 members, and that is not a quorum. A quorum is 147.
Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
We already have the number, but may I just state a point on this matter?
Yes, go ahead.
The Honorable Edsel Lagman submitted to this Majority Leader a list of alleged interpolators numbering about 50 against the bill. Those in favor, we only have several sponsors, about four. So in fact, the leadership is accommodating the 50 by starting the debates already. But if they want to have strict quorum only to be able to discuss this, then we will have not enough time to accommodate all the 50. I wish to cite to them our rule regarding debates. When it comes to debates on any matter, when three in favor have spoken and three anti or against have spoken, we can move to close the period of debates. So we are already advancing and accommodating them by taking up the matter with as much time as possible in order for everybody may be able to express their views. But if they want that we only tackle this when we have a clear number of the quorum, then we will suspend. But they will have not enough time for all of these members to be accommodated, Madam Speaker.
Again, Madam Speaker, we have our highest regard for the position and the opinions of the Majority Leader. But on the other hand, the rules say we cannot really tackle any measure without a quorum. So I move that we first call the roll and establish the quorum. Right now, we have 138 on the floor. See, I have a continuing count. We would like to be fair with everybody. But if we do not have 147 on the floor, we move that we wait for the numbers to be completed before we conduct our official business.
A second motion, a second motion, we suspend until we have the numbers, Madam Speaker.
Okay, a motion to suspend is granted.
...
Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barberas. Barsaga. Batawil. Batucabe. Bautista Bandigan. Belaro. Belmonte Beliciano. Belmonte Jose Christopher. Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Bilyones. Biron. Bulilia. Bundok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Meribida. Brosas. Bulut Bigtang. Kagas. Calderón. Calixto Rubiano. Caminero. Campos. Canama. Kari. Casila. Castelo. Casa Franz. Casa Fedenil. Katamco. Cayitano. Celeste. Cerapica. Ciriñes. Chávez. Chipeco. Co. Coango. Culiantes. Cortés. Cortuna. Cosalan. Crisólogo. Kuah. Corresma. Cueva. Dalipe. Dalok. Dasa. Jesus. De Venecia. De Vera. De Vensor. Del Mar. Del Rosario. De Los Montalia. Dimoporo Dula. Dimoporo Kalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Irigel. Hermita Buain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Yusebio. Ivardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Feriol. Floirendo. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Fentebelia. Garbin. García Gwendolin. García Uc. García Albano. Gari Richard. Gari Sharon. Gasa Taya. Gachalian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Gomart. Gomez. Gonçaga. Gonçales Alexandria. Gonçales Aurelo Dong. Gonçales Fernando. Goreseta. Gulyas. Hernández. Herrera Di. Hofer. Alusos. Javier. Co. Conghun. Labad Labad. Laxson. Lagman. Lanete. Logan. Lasatin. Lia Chon. Li. Limcaichong. Lubrigat. López Benhor. López Carlo. López Manuel. Loyola. Bakapakalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Mangodadatus Huarto. Mangodadatus Ajid. Marcoleta. Marcos. Mariño. Marques. Martínez. Matugas. Miliana. Mending. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralis Jerico. Nogralis Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malañaón. Waminal. Ocampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Pacquiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panganiban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primicia Segbas. Kimbo. Rodaza. Ramirisato. Ramos. Relampagos. Rivilla. Roapuno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roque Harry. Roque Rogelio. Sactalan. Sagarberia. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangan. Salo. Salon. Sambar. Sandoval. Santos Rehto. Sarmiento Cesar. Sarmiento Edgar. Sabillano. Semah. Xiao. Silberio. Singson. Suansingestrelita. Suansiguracio. Suárez. Sielbarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Cherni. Tejada. Teves. Chanco. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Turabinataman. Ti. Umalí. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Bretta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Bilarde. Vilasco. Vilasco Catera. Veloso. Vergara. Villapuerte. Villanueva. Villarasa Suárez. Villarica. Villarin. Villago. Yap Arthur. Yap Meléxio. Yap Victor. Yu. Semor Markarmen. Semor Ronaldo. Serate. Subiri.
Madam. Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 217 members responded to the call.
With 217 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Congressman Atienza?
Just to set the record straight. I know that we have a quorum now. But it's not 217 members on the floor. It's only 196. Let's be honest to the count. Importante punto para lo que usted ha dicho. Let's start with honesty in the count on the floor. 196 are present right now.
Noted Congressman Atienza, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, with that, I reiterate my previous motion that we take up for consideration on second reading House Bill 4727 on Committee Report Number 47. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of House Bill 4727? So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hearing none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 4727, an act imposing death penalty on certain heinous crimes, repeating for the purpose Republic Act Number 9346, entitled "An Act prohibiting the imposition of death penalty in the Philippines and amending Act Number 3815 as amended, otherwise known as the Revised Penal Code and other special penal laws."
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, our parliamentary status is that we are in the period of sponsorship. I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Justice, the gentleman from the Second District of Oriental Mindoro, the Honorable Ronaldo Umalí, to sponsor said measure. So move, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Is there any objection? The Chair hearing none. The Honorable Ronaldo Umalí, Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Before that, Madam Presiding Officer, may I request that Congressman Ching will also be recognized to also give his sponsorship speech, only to define the process by which this bill went to the subcommittee and the mother committee of the Committee on Justice.
Madam Speaker, I withdraw my motion and second the motion of the Honorable Umalí. So move, Madam Speaker, your honor.
The Honorable Congressman Veloz is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues. It is my pleasure to present before this august chamber Committee Report Number 47 of the Committee on Justice. Attached there too is House Bill Number 4727, which serves as a substitute bill to House Bills Number 116, 513, 3239, 3237, 3240, 3418, restoring the death penalty for certain heinous crimes. Let me first discuss the procedural aspect of it, Madam Speaker. Records of the House will show that these said House Bills were referred to the Committee on Justice on the following dates. House Bill Numbers 1 and 16 on July 26, 2016. House Bill Number 513 on July 27, 2016. House Bill Numbers 3237, 3239, and 3240 on August 30, 2016. And House Bill Number 3418 on September 6, 2016. On September 20, 2016, during the regular meeting of the Mother Committee, the Committee on Justice referred House Bills 116, 513, 3237, 3239, and 3240 to its Subcommittee on Judicial Reforms chaired by this representation. During its initial meeting on November 9, 2016, the Subcommittee likewise acquired jurisdiction over House Bill Number 3418, as it had the same subject matter as the rest of the bills on the restoration of the death penalty. On November 9, 2016, the Subcommittee on Judicial Reforms conducted its first meeting. Included in its agenda were the bills restoring the death penalty. For the initial meeting, the Subcommittee invited representatives from government agencies such as Department of Justice, the Public Attorney's Office, the Commission on Human Rights, the Office of the Court Administrator of the Supreme Court, and the Philippine National Police. Representatives from the Volunteers Against Crime and Corruption were also invited, Madam Speaker. During that initial meeting, this representation informed the body that requests for position papers were already sent to all government agencies, non-government organizations, civil society organizations, and other stakeholders who wished to submit their position papers to the Subcommittee. In turn, representatives Edsel Lagman and Kakabagao submitted lists of resource persons whom they wished to be invited by the Subcommittee. These resource persons were accordingly given notices of meetings and requests for position papers. The DOJ, PAO, PNP, and VACC all gave their support on the bills restoring the death penalty. The PAO and VACC submitted their position papers on November 9, while the DOJ and PNP submitted their position papers on November 15, 2016. The CHR, on the other hand, stated its position against the death penalty and agreed to submit an official position paper to the Subcommittee, which they did on November 10, 2016. Additionally, the VACC agreed to submit a list of other organizations who were willing to submit position papers in favor of the death penalty. The Subcommittee on Judicial Reforms continued its deliberations on November 15, 2016. Secretary Vitaleano Aguirre of the DOJ presented the official position paper of the DOJ supporting the restoration of the death penalty. The PNP likewise submitted its position paper and presented statistics on crime and crime rate. It was during this meeting that I reached the possibility of limiting the imposition of death penalty to drug-related crimes only. The Subcommittee then conducted another meeting on November 22, 2016. During this meeting, resource persons over against the death penalty were heard. Various groups and organizations likewise submitted position papers, including the CHR, the Free Legal Assistance Group, Amnesty International Philippines, Coalition Against Death Penalty, I Defend, Phil Rights, Philippine Jesus with Prison Service, International Commission of Jewish, and the Catholic Bishops Conference of the Philippines. Other groups that support the restoration of death penalty also submitted position papers such as the that of Bishop Butz Belika of the Christian Bishops and Ministers Associated Philippines, Citizens Crime Watch, Liga ng Explosivong Pagbabago, Anti-Trapo Movement, and the Revolutionary Alliance ang Bakabansa. After reviving, after receiving rather, Madam Speaker, position papers from government agencies, non-government organizations, civil society groups, and other stakeholders, the Subcommittee resolved in its November 29, 2016 meeting to deliberate on number one, whether or not to impose the death penalty on drug-related crimes only, or two, adopt a more comprehensive death penalty bill. During said meeting, the Subcommittee presented two substitute measures embodying the said proposal. Six members voted for the more comprehensive death penalty bill, while five Subcommittee members voted to adopt a substitute bill imposing the death penalty only on drug-related crimes. Two members voted against most measures. Hence, the more comprehensive measure was approved using Bill Number One as the working draft, and this included two amendments to House Bill Number One, specifically on Number One, Section Eight of the bill, limiting the imposition of death penalty for murder to paragraphs two, that is in consideration of price reward or promise; four, on occasion of any of the calamities enumerated in the preceding paragraph, such as earthquake, eruption of a volcano, destructive cyclone, epidemic, or other public calamity; and six, with cruelty by deliberately and inhumanly augmenting the suffering of the victim, or outraging or scoffing at his person or corpse, as provided in Article 248 of the Revised Penal Code. And Section 17, by lowering the threshold of possession of shabo punishment by death from 50 grams to 10 grams. Having voted six, five, two to approve the substitute bill restoring the death penalty for heinous crimes, the Subcommittee on Judicial Reforms prepared Subcommittee Report for approval by the Mother Committee. On December 7, 2016, the Committee on Justice calendared Subcommittee Report Number Two for consideration and approval. Members of the Committee, as well as other members of the House of Representatives who were not members of the Committee, presented their final thoughts on the measure. After due deliberations, it was argued that further discussions and debate on the restoration of the death penalty is better conducted in this plenary, where all representatives may interpolate the sponsors and throw out the issues relative to the death penalty. Accordingly, Deputy Speaker Gwendoline García moved for the approval of Subcommittee Report Number Two, and the matter was put to vote. With 12 votes in favor and five against, the motion was carried and Subcommittee Report Number Two was approved. Thereafter, Deputy Speaker García moved for the approval of the Committee Report on the bills restoring the death penalty. The motion was put to vote, and with 12 votes in favor, six against, and one abstention, the motion was carried. Thus, Committee Report Number 47 on the bills restoring the death penalty was approved. On January 11, 2017, Committee Report Number 47 on House Bill Number 4727 was filed with the House Bills and Index Division, and on January 16, 2017, the Committee Report was included in the Order of Business in the Committee on Rules. Let me now discuss the substantive matters of House Bill 4727. At the core of House Bill 4727's restoration of death penalty is Article Three, Section 19, Paragraph One of the Constitution, which provides, "Excessive fines shall not be imposed, nor cruel, degrading, or inhuman punishment inflicted." Neither shall penalty be imposed, neither shall death penalty be imposed unless for compelling reasons involving heinous crimes. The Congress thereafter provides for it, "Any death penalty already imposed shall be reduced to recupération perpétuelle." Actually, House Bill 4727 does not, Madam Speaker, present a new question. This was tackled by the Supreme Court in the case of Leo Ichigari. GR Number 117472, 1996 ruling, and motion for reconsideration was resolved by the Supreme Court in 1997. In this People versus Ichigari, Madam Speaker, the Supreme Court held that the predecessor restoring death penalty was constitutional. At the Supreme Court reasoned out, "One of the indispensable powers of the state is the power to secure society against threatened and actual evil. Pursuant to this, the legislative arm of the government enacts criminal laws that define and punish illegal acts that may be committed by its own subjects. The executive agencies enforce these laws, and the judiciary tries and sentences the criminals in accordance with this clause." The opposition to the death penalty uniformly took the form of a constitutional question of whether or not the death penalty is cruel and just excessive unusual punishment in violation of the constitutional prescription against cruel and unusual punishments. The Supreme Court said it is not. And so, Madam Speaker, the forerunner of House Bill 4727, having been ruled by the Supreme Court as constitutional, there is nothing that can be argued against House Bill 4727. Anyway, on the Ichigari's motion for reconsideration, the Supreme Court in bank, February 7, 27, explained, February 7, 1997, the Supreme Court explained that Section 19, Paragraph One, Article Three of the Constitution is a product of heated and extensive debate among members of the 1987 Constitutional Commission. From an originally worded, "Excessive fines shall not be imposed, nor cruel, degrading, or inhuman punishment on the death penalty inflicted, death penalty already imposed shall be commuted to recupération perpétuelle," as proposed by Father Bernas, Commissioner Napoleon Rama proposed an amendment, reasoning out that never in our history has there been a higher incidence of crime, and this sounds very familiar, and that criminality was at its zenith during the last decade. This proposed amendment, joined by Commissioner Cristian Monsod, came out to be what we have now in Section 19, Paragraph One. So it is undisputed, and it cannot be denied, that this is constitutional. Arguments on morality were passed upon by the Supreme Court. Anyway, House Bill 4727 provides in Section Three that imposition of death penalty, heinous crimes defined, the definition of heinous crime was lifted, Madam Speaker, from the decision of Leo Ichigari. Generally, the bill proposes to merely give courts the option to penalize heinous crimes with recupération perpétuelle to death on all of the 21 crimes enumerated from Section Four to Section Twenty-two thereof. Penalized by death, Madam Speaker, death alone are qualified bribery, rape with homicide, rape attended by any of the 10 aggravating or qualifying circumstances enumerated in Article 266B of the Revised Penal Code. enumerated in Article 266B of the Revised Penal Code, destructive arson, the organizer-manager-financier in the sale, trading, administration, dispensation, delivery, distribution, importation of drugs, that is violative of Section Five, Republic Act 9165; the organizer-manager-financier manufacturer in the maintenance of den, dive, or resort of dangerous drugs, violative likewise of Section Eight, Republic Act 9165; the organizer-manager-financier manufacturer in the manufacture of dangerous drugs controlled precursors, violative of Section Eight, 9165; the organizer-manager-financier in the cultivation or culture of plants classified as dangerous drugs or sources thereof, that is violative of Section Sixteen, Republic Act 9165; and number eight, any person who is guilty of planting in evidence any dangerous drug and/or precursor and essential chemical regardless of quantity and purity. Madam Speaker, being a revival of Republic Act 7659 upon which Leo Echigari was sentenced to death, this body is not supposed to hear any further opposition to House Bill 4727. It is a plain reiteration of what the oppositors to Section Nineteen, Paragraph One agreed, and argued during the 1987 Constitution deliberations. And let me point out, Madam Speaker, when Section Nineteen, Paragraph One provides, "Neither shall death penalty be imposed unless for compelling reasons involving heinous crimes" the Congress thereafter provides for it, it is not anybody's concern. It is not the concern of the Church, Madam Speaker, that death penalty be passed. Constitution is explicit. It is solely the concern of this honorable body. And this, Section Nineteen, Paragraph One, is not without reason. Article Two, Section Four of the 1987 Constitution mandates that it is the prime duty of the government to serve and protect the people. Meaning, the death penalty law that this body will pass is designed to protect the people, a mandate to his war when we took office as congressmen. The Philippines is not bound by any state party to the international covenant on civil and political rights and the second optional protocol on the ICCPR, because such agreement is not generally accepted principle of international law. Remember, Madam Speaker, that Article Two, Section Three of the Constitution says, "The Philippines adopts only the generally accepted principles of international law as part of the law of the nation." Our following this international, so-called international convention will tantamount to our amending the Constitution, a matter which we cannot. Why is it not a generally accepted principle of international law? In ASEAN, Madam Speaker, only the Philippines abolished death penalty. Death penalty is still observed and imposed in Japan, in Singapore, in Indonesia, in Malaysia, in Thailand, and even in the United States, China. It is clear, Madam Speaker, that this Protocol Number Two is far from being a generally accepted principle of international law. It is not therefore a part of the law of the land. House Bill 4727 only intends to give back to our courts that option to penalize an offender with death penalty, such is very important in my experience. When I was Justice of the Court of Appeals, way back 2004, a case was elevated to our division. A father raped his daughter, a child. I wanted to impose death penalty. I wanted to affirm death penalty as imposed by the Regional Trial Court, but I just gave life imprisonment. However, 2006, death penalty was abolished. 2008, I had another case of incestuous rape. A father raped a child, pangani na anak, ni-rape din 'yung pangalawang anak, ni-rape din 'yung pangatlong anak. Ang sarap sentensihan ng death penalty. But, I, as a member of the court, could not do anything because in 1996, in 2006 rather, death penalty was abolished. According to Justice Karandang of the Court of Appeals, pakisabi lang, ang hirap sa mga tao na hindi pa nakakakita kung ano ang itsura ng heinous crime. Let me explain the experience of Justice Sinando Bilyon of the Court of Appeals. Meron siyang kaso as artisig Judge. Isang estudyante, teenager, Centro Escolar University, palaging sinusundo ng kanyang tatay. Nadismis sila ng maaga, nagkamali siyang umuwi ng maaga. Malapit-lapit na po sila sa kanilang bahay. Nadaanan, nag-iinuman, apat na tao, mga drag addict pala. Inisnat siya, ni-rape. Anong nangyari at paano ginawa ang rape? Hindi makapasok ang mga ari ng mga sadista na rapist. Kumuo sila ng kahoy, pagkatapos yun, ang pinasok muna sa ari ng babae. Humihiyaw ang bata. Walang magawa at namatay. Ito ay isang halimbawa. Kahit heinous crime na ang ginawa ng mga addicts na ito, hindi sila pwede parusahan ng bitay. In a video entitled "Dasis Distraksyon", ayaw kong isaisahin kung anong laman nito. But let me state, labing isa ng mga bata ang ginahasa ng isang Australiano, lahat ay pinatay. May isang picture, binitay patiwarik, ang one-year, eighteen months old na bata, ni-rape na, pinatuluan pa ng candila 'yung ari, pinatay. May isang video clip doon, pinutol pa ang kilitoris ng bata. Grabe. Kung iisaisahin ko ito, Madam Speaker, makakawalanggana kumain mamayang gabi. But let me point out, I cannot understand, Madam Speaker, mag-aakyat bahay man lang ang isang magnanakaw, bakit kailangan pang patayin ang nanay ni Cherry-Pay Pika-Ci? Bakit pinatay sa bisconde masaker ang asawa ni Bisconde ang anak tsaka mga ibang bata? Bakit sa kaso ni Ivan Hilista? Kinanap ang sasakyan niya, pinatay na si Ivan Hilista, Vincent si Ivan Hilista, sinunog pa. Ito na lang nangyari. Itong Korean businessman, si Ji Ik Ju. Sinasabi kasi ng mga nag-o-opose death penalty, ito ay consequence ng kahirapan ng tao. Si Ricky Santa Isabel ay milionario. Salin niya mahigit twenty million. Si Dumlaw, Rafael Dumlaw, hindi mahirap. But, ang nakakainis dito, Madam Speaker, pinatay na 'yung Koreano, inalisan pa ang asawa ng karapatan na makita man lang ang buhay o ang patay na katawan ni Ji Ik Ju. Ang dami, Madam Speaker, araw-araw titingnan mo ang TV natin, ang daming kakasuka na nangyayari. Kagabi, a three-year-old ni-rape ng kapitbahay. Well, anyway, Madam Speaker, again, what we have is a legal question, not a religious one. Sinabi ng Cortes Suprema in the, uh, earlier, uh, in the forerunner na batas, "The death penalty is the prerogative of Congress according to Section Nineteen, Paragraph One, Article Three of the Constitution." Halimbawa, pag-uusapan natin ito, against the backdrop sa kautusan, Number Five, Thou shalt not kill. Palaging sinasabi ng simbahan, you are to preserve the life even of a heinous criminal. Malipu, Madam Speaker, kasinga-lingan po kasingasabi ng simbahan. I have here, I got this from the internet, cortesi ng isang abugado ng simbahan, the catechism of the Council of Trent, published by command of Pope Pius V. Ang mandate, ipalaganap at ipamigay ito, "That the faithful may approach the sacraments with greater reverence and devotion, the Holy Sinai commands all bishops not only to explain in a manner accommodated to the capacity of the receivers the nature and use of sacraments when they are to be administered by themselves, but also to see that every pastor piously and prudently do the same in the vernacular should it be necessary and convenient." Ano po ang sinasabi sa fifth commandment? Hindi ko na po patatagalin. Kung babasahin mo itong catechism ng Council of Trent from pages two eighty to two eighty-one, "There are five exceptions to the commandment Thou shalt not kill. One, pag ang pinapatay mo ay animal. Two, pag ang sundalo ay pumatatay in times of war. Three, in case of accident. Four, self-defense." Kaya pala, marami akong kilalang sundalo, pare at hindi pare. Dito lang tayo sa pare, Madam Speaker. Marami akong kilalang mga pare na may mga baril may permit to carry. At hindi ko nga alam kung bakit may mga security guards ang mga kumbinto, ang bahay ng mga pare, high-powered firearms ang ganda ng mga guardya. But anyway, the fifth says, "The prohibition does not apply to the civil magistrate to whom is entrusted power of life and death." Itupu ang sinasabi ni Pope Pius V. "The prohibition does not apply to the civil magistrate like our courts to whom is entrusted power of life and death by the legal and judicial exercise of which he punishes the guilty and protects the innocent. The use of the civil sword when wielded by the hand of justice, far from involving the crime of murder, is an act of paramount obedience to this commandment which prohibits murder. The end of the commandment is the preservation and security of human life, and to the attainment of this end the punishment inflicted by the civil magistrate who is the legitimate avenger of crime naturally, then giving security to life by repressing outrage and violence." Hence, these words of David, quote, "In the morning I put to death all the wicked of the land that I might cut off all the workers of iniquity from the city of the Lord." Hindi po totoo na pinagbabawal ng Diyos. Ang pagpatay, as long as they are covered by the five exceptions kasama na po dito if it is the court that would sentence a criminal by death. Madam Speaker, at the end of the day, katulad ninyo mga kasamahan dito, iisa lang ang tanong natin sa sarili natin. Kailangan bang patayin 'yung mga criminal on heinous crimes? There is an argument, ikulong mo na lang ng imprese. Ikukulong na lang natin katulad ni J.B. Sebastian. Ilalagay sa maximum security. Kasi yun ang buhay impierno, only to find out, labas pasok sila sa kulungan. At ang kulungan na parang impierno ay ginagawang kulungan na parang five-star hotel. Hindi po, Madam Speaker, hindi po kailangan ilagay sila sa maximum security. Bakit po? Natatakot ako, ex post facto law ang pag-uusapan natin. Itong pinag-uusapan natin mga crimes, heinous crimes, wala na po tayong magagawa dyan. Whatever law we pass penalizing heinous crimes with death, hindi na po sila sakop dun. Ang kinatatakot ko, one of these days, malalaman na lang natin, isa sa kasamahan natin, kamag-anak ginahasa o sila mismo naakyat bahay o sila mismo na kidnapped for ransom. Isipin mo ang lahat ng heinous crimes na nangyayari sa kapalbiraan natin, iisa lang po ang sagot. Sana, sana po, huwag na nating hayaan ang heinous crime criminal na mabuhay pa muli. Because, again, attend to detail. Kung sino man sa mga kamag-anak natin ang mabibikti man nila, kasalanan po natin yan. Ang dugo nila ay magiging dugo sa ating kamay dahil hindi natin ipinasah. Ang 4727, the bill penalizing with death heinous crimes. Salamat po, Madam Speaker.
Thank you Congressman Veloso, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, Your Honor, for his chance to deliver the sponsorship of House Bill 4727, I move for the recognition of the Chairman of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Reynaldo Umalis. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
The Honorable Reynaldo Umalis recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Distinguished colleagues, it is my pleasure and distinct honor as Chairman of the Committee on Justice to sponsor House Bill Number 4727 as embodied in Committee Report Number Forty-seven. My colleagues, Deputy Speaker Castro and Congressman Veloso, have already discussed most of the issues that have been raised during the Subcommittee deliberations on the death penalty bills. We already heard the reasons why the bills were filed and why the bills passed by the Justice Subcommittee. by the Justice Subcommittee and Mother Committee. Allow me now, Madam Speaker, to explain why House Bill Number 4727 needs to be passed by the House of the people. And I offer four compelling reasons therefore, as follows. First, death penalty is a fitting response to increasing criminality and killings in the country. Second, death penalty is a measure to restore respect for the loss of the land. Three, death penalty is a path to achieving justice. And number four, reimposition of death penalty is geared towards a genuine reform in the Philippine criminal justice system. Let me now discuss my first proposition. Death penalty as a fitting response to increasing criminality and killings in the country. Madam Speaker, dear colleagues, I stand before this August chamber to articulate the present outcry of the citizens of this republic, a bane that threatens the very existence of order in our society. As we sit on these high chairs carrying the mandates of our citizens, the ordinary people fear for their lives and limbs as they walk in our streets. Families second-guess the safety of their homes. Victims of criminalities wait in vain for the arrest and/or verdict of their cases as their thirst for justice fades away. In constant doubt on how our law enforcers and our investigators can amply secure or protect them. And in some instances even, fearful that such men in uniform are either protectors of these criminals if not perpetrators of the crime itself. Now, we are not sure who is the trusty of our people. My esteemed colleagues, we as representatives of the people are called upon to stand against the grave, apparent and imminent danger that we seemingly refuse to understand. That despite our earnest efforts in the previous congresses to pursue reforms in the criminal justice system, we had failed to preserve its reign and integrity. That our existing criminal justice has failed the millions of lives due to wanton disregard of our laws and our authorities. We don't have to be ashamed of our people's actions. According to a study conducted by the Philippine National Police Crime Research Analysis Center, although there is a swift decline in the rate of crimes against properties and persons, incidents of murders are recorded on a dramatic increase. Reportedly, from 81,064 incidents in the month of July to November 2015, the index crime volume dropped by 31% for the same period in 2016. However, a surge of 51% increase in murders is also recorded during the same period. Do we have to look into our eyes? Open our eyes to the crimes that are being committed by our citizens? Yes, we are all witnesses on how these killings filled the banner stories of our daily news since then. In fact, some killings and crimes have become staples in our consciousness. Etched even among our children who either witnessed these crimes in person or are exposed in various forms of media which are relentlessly showcasing crimes perpetrated almost daily. Let me categorize these killings into three kinds. First is the kind that is brought about by the commission of a crime. These are murder incidents committed against innocent civilians during robberies, tiveries, and carnappings. Some committed to conceal the body of another crime such as rape and more recently kidnapped for ransom like the case of Korean businessman Jie Ju, allegedly perpetrated by men in uniform. To many, this case is more than enough reason to reimpose death penalty. The second kind of killing is the one brought about by the recent war on drugs which can be classified into two types, the legal and the extrajudicial. Under our revised penal code, a killing shall be justified if the same is done in the performance of a lawful duty or in self-defense. Otherwise, it is considered a crime. Thus, killings done by police in pursuance of their duty during an encounter of armed resistance are considered legal. According to the Philippine Daily Inquirer article, The Kill List, PNP reported that from June 30, 2016 to January 30, 2017, there are 2,083 drug-related killings committed. 1,101 of which are killed allegedly during legitimate police operations. These are incidents where in armed resistance was allegedly perpetrated by the suspects. Meanwhile, the PNP also reported that there are 982 incidents of murders committed outside police operations. These incidents are unexplained killings committed by unknown assailants for motives which may be related to the campaign against illegal drugs. These are the killings which are considered criminal. Killings that are motivated by either silencing a possible state witness or by vigilant justice. Up to now, a large portion of these incidents are still undergoing police investigations. And the last category of killings prevalent in our street nowadays are those done by gun-for-hires who perpetuate the death trade through employment of motorcycles, otherwise popularly known in our streets as the riding in tandems. These assassins hired to commit murder against civilians for a fee. Such heinous crimes is resorted to by individuals due to different motives such as eliminating business rivals, revenge, at times even ending failed marriages as it was seen as an easier mode than going to courts for annulment such as the murder case of Tanya Camildi of Angela City who was allegedly murdered by her husband Fidel Arsenas in conspiracy with his girlfriend Angela Di Choco. This is the latest news, the victim was killed by a man, Jason Del Valle of Caloocan, the wife of his own friend. She is not alive anymore, and she is now in hospital. Politically motivated killings as well as media killings belong to this species of murder. Undeniably, the common denominator in these killings is exacting justice in a person's own hands. These three kinds of killing, Madam Speaker, are clear manifestations of the failure of our criminal justice system. A failed system that if not corrected will continue to be used and abused by criminals and even by misguided law enforcers. It is a failed system because the people would rather serve justice with their own hands than trust the government to deliver it. It is very frustrating that instead of making international headlines because of our economic achievements, it was the increased number of killings that made the news. This kind of media attention gives the appearance that ours is a country where criminals and vigilantes usurp the government of its duty to deliver justice. These kinds of killings make it appear that our state is governed not by the rule of law but by the rule of man. Thus, Your Honors, with the dysfunctional criminal justice system, it is imperative that we resort to measures to ensure that interest of the greater good, those who are crying for justice, clamoring for peace, and pining for reason is served. I firmly believe that the reimposition of death penalty is a needed legislative measure as we transition to a re-engineered criminal justice system. No less than the Supreme Court in the case of People versus Echeverry quoted Donald Atwell Zoll, and I quote, "If we are to preserve the humane society, we will have to retain sufficient strength in character and will to do the unpleasant in order that tranquility and civility may rule comprehensively." It seems very likely that capital punishment is a necessary, if limited, factor in the maintenance of social tranquility and ought to be retained on this ground. To do otherwise is to indulge in the luxury of permitting a sense of false delicacy to reign over the necessity of social survival." End of quote. Madam Speaker, I believe it has become imperative that we instill in our people, including our men in uniform, the gravity of punishment for committing a crime. People nowadays are not scared of committing a crime anymore because they believe that they can get away with it or they can buy their way to freedom or they can even buy justice. Innocent people are not safe in the streets anymore because criminals believe they can escape punishment no matter how heinous the crimes they commit. Imposing death penalty is a means of bringing back fear to these criminals to prevent them from injecting more poison into our society. This is to make them fear to do wrong or commit a crime. Make them see that committing crimes do not have a place in our society just like in other countries where Filipinos are observed to be disciplined and able to exhibit their best characters as responsible citizens, whether migrants or even overseas Filipino workers. I can only wonder how and why we can be a disciplined people elsewhere and not in our home country. Eleven years ago, this August chamber abolished death penalty and so I asked, what had happened since? Are we any better in reforming our convicted criminals? Or have they gone from bad to worse? From the revelations made by Deputy Speaker Castro and Congressman Veloso, the answer is pretty obvious. So I ask again, if we do not do anything and just maintain the status quo, can we expect change? Change for the better? As I said, we don't expect anything to change if we fight against the worst. I submit that the reimposition of death penalty also signifies that we as a republic do not tolerate and condone justice delivered through the hands of man but only through the rule of law. Vigilante justice must end and for it to end, we must send a clear message to our citizens that justice will be delivered and if need be, delivered totally. We have to remember that the death penalty is a right to protect the lives, the health, and dignity of all, of all the people, especially the innocent. Now I go to my second proposition, death penalty as a measure to restore respect in the loss of the land. Not only is crime being committed in our streets and in our homes, crimes are being committed even inside our local jails and in our national prisons. Criminals continue to damage our society inside our national prison. Instead of suffering the consequences of their wrongdoings, they even live a luxurious life inside the penitentiaries. On this core, there is a need to reform the punitive aspect of our penal system for how can we strike fear in the hearts of these criminals when they know that their prison sentence will even serve as their refuge to continue illegal activities? When they know that they could actually live a better life inside the prison? How can we say that justice has been achieved when instead of punishing these criminals, they are even allowed to perpetuate their illicit activities while serving their sentence on account of a tariff system imposed by unscrupulous prison officials and other government officials? In the past months, that our Committee on Justice conducted hearings and legislative inquiries, it is with much remorse that we have been witnesses to the various spectacles that exposed how rotten our criminal justice system has become. Our citizens were appalled with the revelations that our legislative inquiries exposed. Testimonies from numerous witnesses led us to discover the rampant corruption inside our penitentiaries. The people observed in frustration and disgust as the very institution in which should have penalized and the convicts tolerated the commission of drug trade and other illegal activities inside the penitentiary. Instead of being punished for their criminal acts, the prisoners were allowed to live luxuriously inside to the point of even ridiculing congressional office when compared to an inmate's cubicle. Crime syndicates in connivance with unscrupulous government officials took advantage of the flawed system to feed their selfish interests and perpetuate the impunity of crime. Imagine the time, effort, resources spent by our government in investigating these criminals, capturing them through our law enforcement agencies, prosecuting them, presenting evidence against them, giving them a fair trial, and then finally convicting them for the crimes they have committed only to find out that the punishment of imprisonment has little or no effect on their criminal activities. Imagine the taxes paid by the victims of heinous crimes that feed those who have wronged them. Talking about restorative justice, I can only wonder how deserving these criminals are when they act with impunity inside our jails? How can this convicted felon be reformed after serving their sentence when they willingly commit crimes inside our jails and prisons? Presumably out of fear of reprisal from gang leaders lording over the underworld with a tacit approval or even sanction of prison authorities? When the culture inside our jail system has evolved into one where you will either starve in prison or where you can live a life of luxury or comfort if you stick to the right gang or syndicate? Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, what I have just described are not mere hypotheticals. These are facts. These were revelations during the hearings conducted by the Committee on Justice on the proliferation of drugs inside the New Belibid Prison. Our citizens heard the rumors about drugs and the operation of drugs in our prisons. In the maximum-security prison, I hope the security is higher than the central area of illegal drugs. It's not just a small price for drugs that happen in our prisons. Millions and millions of drugs and connections are being discovered. I don't think that the drugs are the reason for some innocent children to die or some innocent children to die. They are the same reason for the prisons to be closed to change the crimes. One particular aspect of that hearing that struck me, Mr. Speaker, is when the convicted felons were asked the question, "What are you afraid of, prisons or death?" All of them gave the answer, "Death." These convicts are not afraid of imprisonment. These convicts are not afraid of imprisonment. In fact, all of them were serving life sentences. What they only feared was death, the ultimate punishment for convicted criminals that would put an emphatic stop to their capacity to commit more crimes. Indeed, humans fear death more than anything else. Ordinary, law-abiding citizens fear imprisonment. Hardened criminals and those who are capable of committing heinous crimes fear nothing except death. Mister Speaker, before we conducted these hearings on the Belibid drug trade, I was also against death penalty. Dati hindi ako naniniwala na kinakailangan ng parusang kamatayan para panatilihin ang katahimikan sa ating mga kalsada at komunidad. After hearing all those testimonies, the corruption of our jail guards and other high-ranking officials in government, the way these criminals conducted their illegal activities with impunity inside our jails, I had a change of heart. I have come to the conclusion that we need to strike fear in these criminals, and the only way to do that is to impose the punishment that they fear most, and that is death. Layunin din ang ating sinusulong na death penalty bill na ipaalala sa ating mga kababayan na ang mga batas ay hindi dapat baliwalin kundi mga alituntunin na dapat respetuhin at sundin. Tulad ng pagrespeto at pagsunod ng mga Pilipino sa ibang bansa sa mga batas na umiral sa kina nilang kinarurunan. Sa pangatlo po, and my third proposition is that death penalty is our path to achieving justice. I admit, Mister Speaker, that these problems involving our prisons and our prison system are but symptoms of a greater problem of the criminal justice system. The truth of the matter, my esteemed colleagues, is that we are merely scratching the surface of a deeply rooted menace which is the derogation of the entire criminal justice system. In fact, the killing of Mayor Espinosa in jail showcases our dilemma. Imagine a judge issuing a warrant within a jail premises? A prisoner in possession of illegal firearms and drugs inside the prison cell? Law enforcers effecting a search in the wee hours of the morning to the point of even excluding the jail authorities? Then, of course, the resulting death of Mayor Espinosa. Thereafter, we witnessed the Senate inquiry conducted their own, where we witnessed those involved policemen trying to cover each other's back. Thus, I can only wonder, how can we arrive at the truth and serve the ends of justice in the death of Mayor Espinosa? Mind you, the systemic problem in the criminal justice system cannot be solved through piecemeal legislative measure. There is a need to re-engineer the system comprehensively and holistically. Ang mga solusyon at pagbabagong kinakailangan para baguhin ang isang bulok na sistema ay hindi magagawa sa isang upuan lang. Mahabang panahon ang kailangan upang makamtan ang pangkalahatang pagbabago. In fact, the several hearings conducted by the committee, by the Justice Committee on the Matter, have already resulted in the pursuit of policy initiatives to address reforms in the correctional system in a way that would prevent convicts from further committing crimes inside our prisons. But the more pressing question now is, what do we do in the meantime? How can we as legislators simply stand aside and wait with bated breath for these so-called reforms to take place? Reforms that had been promised when death penalty was abolished more than ten years ago? It must be remembered that the cornerstone of our criminal justice system is the presumption of innocence. Proof beyond reasonable doubt is necessary for conviction. In this regard, our justice system is geared and skewed even in favor of the accused. Laws and evidence are always interpreted in case of doubt to favor the accused such that an ounce of doubt would weaken a prosecution case against the accused. Verily, it cannot be said that death penalty is anti-poor. Let me also address another important point, Mister Speaker. There have been concerns raised that given our justice system, restoration of death penalty would eventually lead to the execution of an innocent person. I would like to emphasize that from a time a person has been arrested for a crime, that person will be subjected to due process. Even if an accused has been sentenced to death by the trial court, that person still has the remedy of appeal to the Court of Appeals. And even if the Court of Appeals would sustain that conviction, the Supreme Court would still conduct an automatic review, and I repeat, automatic review, and would reopen the case and weigh all the evidence in order to determine whether the death penalty should be imposed or the penalty of reclusion perpetua or life imprisonment would suffice. Lastly, the President may exercise his powers of clemency or pardon at any stage of the proceedings, even right before the execution. In short, Mister Speaker, once the death penalty is restored, no person will be executed without having gone through this long, exhaustive, and judicious process of determining whether or not the accused deserves the death penalty for the crime committed. Against the foregoing long, tedious, and judicious process, otherwise known as due process, is EJK or extrajudicial killing, where any Tom, Dick, and Harry, including men in uniform, can impose their death wish on anyone, guilty or not. To make matters worse, some of these men in uniform are even taking advantage of the war on drugs in employing a scheme referred to as tokhang for ransom. Sa halip na bumaling ang ating mga kababayan sa kapulisan para sa kanilang proteksyon at kaligtasan, sila pang mga otoridad mismo ang umaabuso sa kapangyarihan at gumagawa ng mga karumaldumal na krimen. Wala ng paggalang at takot na gumawa ng katiwalihan ang ilang miembro ng ating kapulisan dahil marahil iniisip nila na ang krimen o ang batas ay matatakasan nila. Now, Mister Speaker, are we still insisting that criminality has not reached such heights as to compel our government to impose death penalty? Do we not see the reality that compels us to address the challenge ahead of us? So take your pick, death without due process or death after due process? Kaya nga po, kailangan nating muling buhayin ang parusang kamatayan upang makamtan ang inaasam ng lahat na tunay na katarungan. When we look at the imposition of death penalty, we must not only look at the life of the convicted. Also, we must look at the innocent lives of the rest of the community and all other peace-loving citizens who fear these criminals, to include men in uniform and other law enforcement agencies who use their police power to perpetuate crimes. We must look at the hapless faces of victims deprived of justice and speedy resolution agonizing for years because criminals have found ways to skirt the law and hide from this functional criminal justice system. It is high time that we must look at the impact of death penalty to the entire community and the entire country. The police power of the state must reign as capital punishment is not just about life of a criminal sentenced to death but about the welfare of the entire community. As the Supreme Court aptly put it, "To ask what the rights are of the dying is to ask what the rights are of the living." That is in People versus Echegaray. My third proposition is the imposition of, sorry, my fourth proposition is the imposition of death penalty towards a genuine reform in the Philippine criminal justice system. Many might fear the ire of religious groups and the loss of votes from their constituents who are so-called pro-life and against death penalty. But it is time to make a stand. It is our duty as statesmen, as representatives of our people, to safeguard and protect them and the entire community. It is our duty to be fearless for them. Let us not be constrained by these concerns. Let us focus our attention on the challenge ahead of us, the challenge to reform and re-engineer our criminal justice system. And so I encourage my esteemed colleagues to be fearless advocates of death penalty and genuine reform in the criminal justice system. As a final point in the imposition of the capital punishment, let us be guided by the maxim, "Salus populi est supremae lex." The welfare of the people is the supreme law. The safety of the greater many should be above everything else. We must abide by the foundations of our legal system and that the law must govern utterly even if it is severe. Jura lex said lex, "The law may be harsh, but it is the law. Let it reign supreme." Mister Speaker, gruesome and heinous crimes are wantonly committed against hapless victims as depicted by my colleagues who earlier spoke before this August halls. Please join us in the Committee on Justice to pursue other meaningful reforms in our criminal justice system. The imposition of death penalty for heinous crimes is just the start of such meaningful reforms. And the Committee on Justice would like to give the assurance that we will continue all our initiatives so that the reforms that we need in the criminal justice system will be put in place by this Seventeenth Congress. Maraming maraming salamat po sa inyo, Mister Speaker, and my esteemed colleagues in the House of Representatives.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the honorable Representative from the First District of Albay, Congressman Edsa Lagman, for his interpolation of our honorable sponsor. So move, Your Honor.
The honorable Congressman Lagman of the First District of Bicol is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. But this representation is from the First District of Albay, not of Bicol, which is the region.
I stand corrected, Mister, Honorable Representative Edsa Lagman.
Well, this representation has been ready to discuss the overview of the oppositors' grounds against the imposition of the death penalty since December last year. And we truly appreciate the gesture of the Majority Leader for accommodating our interpolators. We have submitted a partial list of twenty-five with a colloquial that we will submit more. But with all due respect to the leadership of the majority, may we know whether there are sufficient members of the House to constitute a quorum for this very important debate?
Majority Leader.
Yes, Mister Speaker, Your Honor. Our count this afternoon showed definitely that we have a quorum to conduct our business, Mister Speaker.
And that was thirty-one hour ago. After the delivery of the sponsorship speeches, I think the number has considerably diminished. So I don't think there is a quorum remaining in the House.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, we wish to know the pleasure of the gentleman from Albay.
Well, it is obvious, Mister Speaker. I don't have to articulate my motion, but if the distinguished Majority Leader would like me to articulate my motion, I move to adjourn for lack of quorum.
Mister Speaker, may I appeal to our honorable colleague to give a chance to the numerous members of the House who wish to debate this very important measure? Dilatory tactics only serve to cut down the time of our colleagues who wish to be heard regarding this, Mister Speaker.
This is not a dilatory tactic, Your Honor. There is always the chance for members to hear the debates if there is a quorum. Because we cannot conduct business without having a quorum.
Once more, Mister Speaker, Your Honor, we appeal to the honorable gentleman. Please let us continue the debate on House Bill 4727.
We will only debate when there is a quorum.
With that, Mister Speaker, we second the motion of the gentleman from Albay to adjourn session till tomorrow, February eight, four o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Mister Speaker, Your Honor.
There is a motion, any objection? Hearing none, the session is adjourned till four o'clock, February five, February eight, two thousand seventeen.